I call the Tuesday, October 23rd, 2018, meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. And we're blessed tonight to have our invocation by Dr. Alan McFarland, Calvary Evangel- excuse me, Evangelistic Baptist Church. Got to sneeze. And I'll ask my colleagues to stand with me for the invocation, and then after the invocation, Councilman Bill Moody will lead us in the pledge allegiance.
And Heavenly Father, we are grateful that we are in a country that would allow us to pray. And Lord, we are very grateful that we are in a city that expresses their desire for prayer. And God, I pray that you will be with them tonight as they meet everything that's on the agenda. We commit it to you. We pray for all the planning that have taken place to be here tonight. And God, we know that you are sovereign, and that your perfect will is going to take place even tonight. So we are grateful that we can pray to you, the Lord of Lords, and the King of Kings. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. We will now have our roll call, and we'll do that electronically. Please hit the yes button to indicate your presence. And Madam Clerk, we have a majority. Tonight, before we go any further, you'll notice all of us up here are wearing pink. And October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and we all know somebody personally who has had breast cancer. And we do this as City Council to show our support for this battle against breast cancer in particular, but cancer in general. And so that's why we proudly wear pink tonight. With that, we have the consideration of approval of minutes. We have the minutes of a call meeting of October the 9th, 2018, and the minutes of a regular meeting of October the 9th, 2018, and we'll consider the approval of both. Is there a motion to approve? We have a motion to approve, and it's been duly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? The question is, to approve the minutes? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to—Madam Clerk, if you could read the protocol, please, for speakers.
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address counsel on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you. We have two special presentations, and the first is a presentation of a proclamation for Veterans Small Business Week, and we do have members of our Department of Economic Development. And as they come forward, two things will happen. One, Vice Mayor Elizabeth Somas, who is our council liaison, will tell you about the proclamation. And then, when we're all set, City Clerk Deborah White will read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Coming forward now is our Executive Director of our Economic Development Authority, Mr. Robert Moore, the Assistant Director, Mr. Smith, and Kathy Revel, our Chairman of our Economic Development Authority, who is a volunteer citizen chairman. We also have Miriam Jigetz from the EDA, citizen volunteer, and Tracy Link. And we're delighted to have them to be part of what we've started. We had a presentation just a few weeks ago about—not Merchant Day. What did we have, Mr. Moore?
Manufacturing Day.
Manufacturing Day, sorry. So today—tonight, we're going to focus on Veterans Small Business.
Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. City of Portsmouth, a proclamation. Whereas the City of Portsmouth recognizes and values the dedication and entrepreneurial spirit within our community and the Commonwealth of Virginia, and whereas Veterans Small Businesses keep our community, the Commonwealth, and America's economies growing strong, and whereas there are numerous Veterans Small Businesses establishments in Portsmouth representing a significant percentage of the small businesses here in Portsmouth, and whereas numerous entities are committed to helping our Veterans Small Businesses grow and create new jobs in our community, providing exemplary workforce training, financial assistance programs, research, and technical assistance. And whereas the City of Portsmouth, the Portsmouth Economic Development Authority, and the Portsmouth Ports and Industrial Commission support the contributions that Veterans Small Businesses make in our Portsmouth community. Now, therefore, our Mayor, John L. Rowe, Jr., of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, do hereby proclaim November 5th through 9th, 2018, as Veterans Small Business Week in Portsmouth, urge our residents to show support and appreciation for the Veterans Small Businesses community and witness whereof. And on behalf of the Portsmouth City Council, he does hereby set his hand and cause the seal of Portsmouth, Virginia, to be affixed this 23rd day of October, 2018.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome, sir.
The backbone of our national economy is small businesses. Ninety-eight percent of all of our businesses in the country are small businesses. That's true at the state level, it's true at the local level. But what's really important here is Veterans Small Businesses. We all know one of these, and I urge everybody that's both here or watching this council meeting to support Veterans Small Business, and particularly during the week, the first week in November. The second thing, I want to thank the volunteers, the members of the Economic Development Authority, who are standing up here. What they do is really important, hard work, and they do it out of the love of this city. And their payment is the satisfaction that jobs are created and we have a vibrant economy. Thank you again.
Would you like to make some comments?
On behalf of the Authority, I would like to echo what Mayor Rowe has said. Our small businesses are the backbone of our economy right here in Portsmouth, Virginia, and we'd like to recognize the Veterans Small Businesses next week and urge all of you to do the same.
Thank you. Yes. Oh, one more photograph? Before these folks sit down too, I want to brag on our Economic Development Department. This is the A-team. It's like a dream team, and what they do is just awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next is the presentation of special appeal pens to persons who we have recently and newly appointed to our boards and commissions. And I'll ask Councilman Bill Moody to handle this presentation, sir.
And if the following would join Councilman Moody at the Sergeant-at-Arms desk, please, as I call your name. Mr. Joseph McClure with the History Commission. Ms. Latoya Hype with the Law Library Board. Ms. Judith McGinley with the Portsmouth Park and Authority and the Towing Advisory Board. Mr. David Hawley with the Supplemental Retirement Board.
How you doing? Thanks.
And Mr. Douglas Union with the Wetlands Board.
Folks, let's give a hand to their newest volunteers. What the mayor said about the last group of volunteers being the backbone of the economy, these folks and others who volunteer on our boards and commission, they're actually the backbone of a lot of work that goes on in the City of Portsmouth. And for that, we're grateful. People have said that volunteerism's the highest form of patriotism, and in that regard, they're absolutely right. When you look around the city, the state, even the nation, a lot of the things that gets done are through the work of volunteers. And it's not because of the high pay. Because all of you know what the pay is. It's because you want to do it, and for that, we're grateful. And thank you again for standing up and volunteering for our city. Thank you so much.
This brings us to item 18-404, which is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption for this public hearing?
Yes, sir. 18-404, Public Hearing on the Proposed Adoption of a Resolution Approving (1) a Concurrent Resolution Adopting Amended and Restated Articles of Incorporation for the Southeastern Public Service Authority of Virginia, and (2) amended and restated Articles of Incorporation of the Southeastern Public Service Authority of Virginia. Collectively, the documents, the resolution would also authorize the mayor to execute the documents on behalf of the city. The purpose of the documents is to amend Southeastern Public Service Authority of Virginia Articles of Incorporation by (1) deleting the existing two-term limitation for members of CIPSA Board of Directors who are appointed by member localities, and (2) modifying the defined term used to designate members of the CIPSA Board of Directors who are appointed by member localities.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And before I ask—may I open the public hearing, I'm going to ask the city attorney to give a little bit of the history of this matter.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, the Southeastern Public Service Authority, of course, addresses and disposes of waste for, I believe, 11 member localities here in the Southampton Roads area. In its original orientation, staff members or city appointees to that board were limited to two terms, I believe four years apiece. In the last General Assembly session, CIPSA determined that it would be best if the city appointees had the opportunity to serve longer periods of time, because typically they are staff and employees that are knowledgeable about the waste disposal operations in various cities. And with that, with the passage of that particular legislation, each locality is required to have a public hearing and to pass concurrent resolutions so that the CIPSA Board can, in fact, remove the term limitation on behalf of city appointees. And that's what's before us tonight.
Thank you, sir. With that, I'll open the public hearing. If there's anybody that wants to speak either for or against this matter, please come to the lectern. You'll have five minutes. Please state her name and address. Anybody would like to speak to this issue? Seeing our hearing done, I declare the public hearing closed. Which brings us to item 18-381, Unfinished Business. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption to this ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance, (1) accepting a port security grant in the amount of $167,295 from the Department of Homeland Security, Federal Emergency Management Agency, and appropriating said amount in the FY 2019 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department, and (2) appropriating $55,765 from the Asset Forfeiture Fund to the FY 2019 Grants Fund to serve as the required local match for the said port security grant.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move or adopt? Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the question, which is to adopt, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to the City Manager's Report, item 18-405. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of this ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a bulletproof vest partnership program grant in the amount of $46,750 from the U.S. Department of Justice, and appropriating said amount in—as revenue to the FY 2019 General Fund as partial reimbursement for the purchase of body armor vests for the Portsmouth Police Department.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt? Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Which brings us to item 18-406, which is the consideration and adoption of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, would you read that caption, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting an Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $85,615 from the U.S. Department of Justice, and appropriating said funds in the FY 2019 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department.
Thank you, ma'am. So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move or adopt? Second.
We have a motion on the floor that's been made and duly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to 18-407. Would you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting four-for-life program grant funds in the amount of $73,104.72 from the Virginia Department of Health, Office of Emergency Medical Services, and appropriating said funds in the FY 2019 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services.
Thank you, ma'am. So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move or adopt? Second.
We have a motion that's been made and duly seconded. Any discussion on this motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to the consideration of another ordinance, and that is item 18-408. Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting aid to localities' funds in the amount of $330,675 from the Virginia Department of Fire Programs, and appropriating said funds in the FY 2019 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services.
Thank you. So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Adapt. Second.
We have a motion to adopt that's been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And the motion carries. Which brings us to the consideration of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption for this ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a hazmat team equipment exercise and training grant in the amount of $30,000 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, and appropriating said funds in the FY 2019 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services hazardous materials emergency rescue response team.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Adapt. Second.
We have a motion to adopt this ordinance. It's been duly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to 18-410, the consideration and adoption of a certain resolution. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution to approve the FY 2019 Community Services Performance Contract for the Department of Behavioral Healthcare Services.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Move or adopt?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 18-411, which is the consideration of a certain resolution. Would you read the caption of the resolution, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution approving (1) a concurrent resolution adopting amended and restated Articles of Incorporation for the Southeastern Public Service Authority of Virginia, and (2) amended and restated Articles of Incorporation of the Southeastern Public Service Authority of Virginia, and authorizing the mayor to execute same.
Move or adopt? Second.
We have a motion that's been made and duly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 18-412, which is the consideration of two resolutions. We'll consider the resolutions separately, and would you read the caption of 18-412A, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution endorsing the city's 2019 federal legislative package for the 116th Congress. No?
Is that A?
Is that B?
That's B.
Oh, sorry.
We'll do A first.
They got mixed up.
No problem.
A resolution endorsing the city's 2019 General Assembly legislative package.
So that we can put this matter before us, is there a matter—motion to adopt?
Move or adopt?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. We are now ready for discussion, and we do have one registered speaker, and that's Mark Yodolgi Yotroski. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow interested parties. You have a good slate of state legislative initiatives. I particularly endorse the fifth bullet point on your set of slides, identifying legislative budgetary means for the state to address ERC contract, the existing ERC contract, to pay down tolls until the contract can be purchased by the state. I would recommend that you add some specific wording to that so that it includes using funds from the Hampton Roads Transportation Fund, which is—that fund was created by a special higher sales tax rate in the Hampton Roads area and a special higher gasoline tax rate in the Hampton Roads area. But the enabling legislation specifically excluded the ERC tunnels from being a recipient of funding from that fund. That's inequitable to the residents of Portsmouth. We are paying into that fund, and we should have a project—we should be eligible for project funding that would ease the burden on us. That, of course, is a stopgap. The long-range objective should be to renegotiate the contract so those tolls are not as oppressive. I wanted to add my endorsement to the fourth bullet on the second page of your slides, or third—I guess, third slide, dedicated transit funding for HRT and statewide transit needs—for HRT and statewide transit needs to include development of higher-speed passenger rail service, especially in the Hampton Roads and Richmond corridor. That is vital for our ability to move people across the Commonwealth. I am sorry that you did not include two other items. I would ask you to reconsider their inclusion. One of them is an item that's been on your legislative agenda for a couple of sessions prior to this one, and that would be enacting legislation to automatically restore the rights of people who were convicted of felonies and have completed their sentences. Right now, there's still an administrative procedure that's required without the option of parole. I believe that rights restoration should proceed upon release. Secondly, there would be an item that has also been in your packet before, which would be to eliminate the suspension of voting rights for people convicted of any violation of law, including felonies. There are two other states that already have that provision, and I have previously copied you on a report issued under the auspices of the Weldon Cooper Institute, which ran through the history of how taking away rights of convicted felons came to pass, was essentially trying to suppress votes of African-Americans. So I would ask you, as an equity issue, to add that back to your packet. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And the chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. As council knows, Dr. Cook from Old Dominion did a presentation about the impact of tolls on Portsmouth. One number that stood out to me was the $8.8 million taxable sales revenue that we lose on an annual basis. But he also said something that got my attention, and that's perhaps looking at a way that residents in the localities would get a break on the tunnel tolls, some type of a discount. I think that needs to be followed up on a serious note and see how that works in other localities. So, like the mayor's suggestion, that Dr. Cook make that same presentation in the effort to build regional support, because we're stronger as a region when we go to Richmond. Unfortunately, we weren't together as a region when we fought tolls, but now we're still fighting tolls. We're fighting them from a different direction. But the mayor suggested that Dr. Cook make that same presentation to the Suffolk City Council. I like that idea, Mayor, to build consensus, because that tolls are killing the whole region economically. Unfortunately, Portsmouth is the worst-impacted city, so we need to continue the fight. I also ask the question of our delegation— I also asked the question of our delegation, all contracts have compliance parameters in the contract. And I ask, who's in charge of, who's the watchdog up in Richmond? Do we have a Department of Compliance that looks into that? And that's something else I think we need to follow up on. That contract is very comprehensive, is about as thick as a phone book, and I'm sure there are a lot of compliance parameters, and we don't know whether ERC is meeting those or not. I do know that the work on the tunnel, downtown tunnel in particularly, seems like it is going on forever. So, you know, whether there were deadlines associated with that, but we need to find the answers and stay on top of it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. The chair recognizes Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. On the adoption of the cities to the General Assembly Legislative Package, I think it's very comprehensive, and it covers a lot of areas and a lot of things. I have trepidation with the gaming, casino gaming issue, which is a part of it, but I'm going to vote for it because of, I'm not going to eliminate voting for it because of that one issue, because there's so many other things that are essential that we need to pursue, but I will, you know, deal with it later on, on the agenda. I just wanted to make that clear, that I am going to support the adoption of the package, but...
Good. Thank you, sir. Any other discussion, comments? Ready for the que...
Yes, sir.
Yeah, one other issue, I meant to say, I also support what Mr. Gudaldi Yatroski mentioned about those two things that were removed and why they were eliminated, they were in there before.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
And on behalf of council, I'll write each member of the delegation that wasn't here tonight, thanking them for their visit and reiterating the points that have been made tonight. Which brings us to 18-412B. And will you read that caption, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution endorsing the city's 2019 federal legislative package for the 116th Congress.
Is there a motion to approve so we can consider this matter?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded to adopt the resolution. We're ready for discussion. We do have one speaker, and that speaker is Mark Gudalgi Yatroski. And sir, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow interested parties. I am very happy to see that you have included something that was in last year's packet and still has relevance, because it has not been a change in federal procedure. And that has to do with allowing for the monthly payment of premiums for flood insurance. There was some really staggering statistic. In the recent destruction by Hurricane Michael in the Panhandle of Florida, there was only a minuscule number, minuscule percentage, of people whose property was damaged who actually had flood insurance. And one of the obstacles to people obtaining flood insurance is those people who are most at risk have very high premiums. So having the ability to break it up into 12 monthly chunks instead of having to pay it in one lump sum would make it more accessible to a larger number of people. The relevance for us is, I have seen those statistics on the number of people in Portsmouth who have flood insurance, but I suspect it tracks national averages. So this would be a benefit to our citizens. We are at risk. Your legislative packet discussed funding for mitigation, for removal, protection of civic infrastructure. The same sorts of issues face our homeowners and businesses in Portsmouth. So anything that we can do to help them recover in the event of flooding is greatly appreciated, and I thank you for recognizing that.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion on this motion? Here and done, we're ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to 18-413, the consideration and adoption of a certain resolution. Would you read the caption to that, of that resolution, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution in support of amending the Virginia Code to permit casino gaming in the Commonwealth of Virginia.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. The question is before us. We're ready for discussion, and we have one reg, well, we have several registered speakers, and the first is Steve Carroll. And sir, you have five minutes.
Evening, Mayor, members of council. Before it gets away from me, no, 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 no casinos, no riverboat gambling. My rationale goes back a long ways. Hampton Roads Transportation Act was, has been argued before this council, and we knew the tolls were coming, and we simply had it rehashed into what we now have. It should not be any surprise. A while back, Senator Lucas wanted to get a hotel built and wanted us to give her cash. That didn't fall through for her, so she wanted bond guarantees. That fell through, so she sues the city of Portsmouth and leaves us with $100,000 legal bill to show for it. Senator Lucas was the co-sponsor of the 1995 Public Private Transportation Act. It's probably little known, but there it is, right there. A whole lot of other people co-sponsored it, but she's our state senator. She co-sponsored it, and it paved the way for what we are now stuck with, the ERC tolls. Senator Kane pushed the button. A lot of people greased the track, and our good governor, McDonald, sealed the deal. And a whole lot of people knew it was coming. So I really wonder what the purpose of this is for. Is it to reduce the tolls? Is it going to go straight to the city of Portsmouth? But I don't know what's going to come, but I can tell you what we are going to get. My middle daughter, 26 years old, just spent a business trip in New Orleans last week. She had to go. The things she saw would curl your nose hairs. She saw things that I didn't think I would ever think we would see in this city, but we'll see them. Public nudity, prostitution, open alcohol use, drug sales, the way she described certain individuals on the street, some of the ladies were not clad with enough cotton to diaper a gnat. And that's what you want to bring to us? That's what you want to bring to us? And don't tell me that, well, you'll deal with it. On Court Street, you wouldn't deal with the problems we had there. Public urination, lewd lascivious conduct on the hood of a car, and I apologize for my frankness, but that's the way it is. Drug paraphernalia, prostitution paraphernalia left in the neighborhood of Old Town. Brawling, public intoxication. Couldn't deal with it on a small scale. What makes us believe that you will deal with it on a large scale? Now, I asked her about the casinos. She said, yeah, there's Aharas down there. Anything within a couple of blocks, it was kept clean. The rest of the city is a pigpen, a filthy, decadent, depraved pigpen, and that's what you're going to bring to the city of Portsmouth if you bring riverboat gambling. We don't need it. We have other ways to solve our problems besides supporting vice. You're going to put strain on our police department? We're going to have to hire extra police. We're already cash-strapped, and certainly it's not for the tax revenue. We just sealed the deal, apparently, to spend $60 million in debt service and principal to build a new school that this city doesn't need. A temporary spike in a sixth-grade attendance population could have been solved with temporary classrooms. We don't have any. Other cities have hundreds of them. We could have solved that problem. We didn't need to spend that money. That's money that we needed elsewhere. We can't even get the Churchill and Bridge built yet, and that's been lingering for over 10 years. And where's that money? Why haven't we started the Churchill and Bridge? So we're our own worst enemy. We don't need casino gambling. It will do nothing but destroy Old Town. They're not any more privileged in any of the neighborhood, but this will drastically and adversely affect them. We don't need it for Portsmouth. We don't need it.
Sir, your time is up. Thank you. The next speaker is Ross Sisarone, and sir, you have five minutes.
How's this? Okay, honorable mayor and responsible... Okay. I'm going to address and kind of follow up on what the gentleman ahead of me said. It's going to bring a lot of crime, and it's going to bring prostitutions. If you were on the streets, they'd call them whorehouses. And the difference is going to take place, and I've submitted to all of you, the addiction that's going to take place in the city of Portsmouth. I myself, I moved down here in '84 because I was thinking about, this is a Bible Belt, and I'm very interested in learning about Jesus and God, and this is the reason I came down here. And then what's taking place now is that Senator Lucas is, wants to put a casino down here and make a lot of money. And it's going to bring a lot of greed, and it's going to bring a lot of corrosion and all kinds of stuff that's not going to happen. And then this is very, very important because the children are going to be growing up, and as these casinos start to bring in, you'll be bringing in gamblers from North Virginia, all over, and they'll start pouring in here from all over, and they'll start taking ferries and driving through the tunnel from Norfolk to be able to be able to gamble. Now, it's an addiction, and I've submitted to all of you some articles that create addiction when there is gambling. And that's the big thing that's happened. This is a Christian community, and I don't want it to change. And I see that if this is a condition where you all vote for a casino, and there's only been one person going to make a lot of money, and that's her, and the thing is, it's not conducive to the liberties and the development of children in this area. And this is very, very important. So the only thing I'm asking now is, according to decorum and order, I can ask the audience to stand up, who's against it? That's what it says. I read it before I came down here, that I was able to do this. And I can ask that the...
No, sir, this is not a public hearing. You have the lectern. You're the only speaker at this point.
I can't follow the rule on five, Section 5, in the Constitution of the Portsmouth City? That's what it says here, sir.
You read, you heard what the clerk said. You have the lectern, sir. Nobody else?
Well, I think that's against my thinking, and I think it's against what I need to say and bring the audience to bring, so they can stand up and show you and, as a quorum, that they're against this casino. And I think that's very important, and I don't understand, I mean, that's what the, I know that's what she said, but I'm reading at the decorum and order that I'm able to do that. That's what it says. And you're refusing for me to do that?
You signed up to speak, sir, only you.
If I'd have signed up for, let me ask you a question, then. If I'd have signed up for the decorum at the same time and asked if the audience could do that, then it would have been an acceptable thing, then. In other words, I made him a snake, huh? Okay, but I just want the audience to know that they should stand, well, they can't stand up, but anyway, let them all think about, shouldn't, and all of you up there shouldn't be voting for this casino. Ciao.
Thank you, sir. The chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. The last speaker had mentioned the Churchill and Bridge, and since this has played over the airwaves throughout Portsmouth and some of the other cities, I'd like to call on the city manager to update us on that project. It was my understanding, the funding is there. I think this state has added up to the tune of about $35 million. And the last, I recall, it was in the permitting process, maybe the Coast Guard permits were the last outstanding permits. I'll turn it over to you, city manager.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, the Churchill and Bridge is fully funded by the state, a funding source. The city has worked on its permitting, of which it has received at this point all of its final permitting, and the Churchill and Bridge construction will start before the end of this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mark Gudalgi Yatroski, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow citizens. Like the two preceding speakers, I am opposed to casino gambling in the Commonwealth of Virginia. I was brought up that just because everybody else is doing it doesn't mean you have to do it, especially if it means jumping off a bridge or a financial cliff. And so the fact that Maryland has casino gambling and Atlantic City has casino gambling doesn't impress me one whit. So the same economic analysts who were involved in the report that you have cited regarding the damage that the tunnel tolls have done also issues a regional report called the State of the Region annually. And in the 2015 edition of that report, Dr. Cook and his colleagues made some observations relative to the benefits or negligible benefits of casino gambling. There are tables and charts and graphs, but I'm just going to hit a couple of the high points. So according to the analyses of the impacts on employment, it's clear that there would likely be very modest impact on employment, and that's mainly confined to the entertainment and hospitality industries. Plus, there might be a very small earnings effect from a new casino. Plus, there might be a very small earnings effect from a new casino. Most of the job expansion in the entertainment and hospitality sectors would likely come at the expense of other industries. So, you would be cannibalizing existing employment to fill the jobs in the casinos. Whenever a state or locality is considering the expansion of legalized gambling, it should consider the likely impact a casino will have on other gambling industries. In the Commonwealth, this would be the lottery, which is our predominant form of legalized gambling. But from the consumer perspective, you know, one is a trade-off for the other. So, it is likely that with the advent of casino gambling, our lottery proceeds would be reduced. And here's the thing about the lottery as opposed to casino gambling. The lottery is run by the state. It's not run by private entrepreneurs. So, the likelihood that the games would have cheating in them, you know, beyond the fact that gambling is not for the mathematically challenged, but with that disclaimer, you are more likely to get a straightforward result from a state-run lottery than from a private casino. But lastly, and this is big, our former mayor did some conversing with representatives of the gaming industry, and he shared with us the fact that Portsmouth really isn't on their radar screen. If gambling is to occur, Virginia Beach would be their principal target. And for us to be in the game, so to speak, we would have to provide massive inducements to try to bring them here. But there is no saying that just because you have a casino, it will remain open over the long haul. So, it's a losing game for Portsmouth, and it's a losing game for the Commonwealth as a whole. I urge you to reject this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Donna Si. And ma'am, you have five minutes. And before you speak, the chair recognizes Councilman Bill Moody. He asked for the floor. And you'll have your chance.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to address the previous speaker, Mr. Ross Cicerone. Under Section 5 decorum and order, it does read, during all other agenda items, a speaker may request an expression of consensus, support, or opposition by calling for a show of hands or for members of the audience to silently stand. So, that, the citizen's correct. It's in the rulebook.
Thank you. Now, the next speaker is Donna Si. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. I oppose this resolution because casino gambling is a conspiracy to corrupt public morals. Casino gaming is still a common law offense. The government is responsible to prevent public corruption of the communities such as gambling, drugs, liquor, prostitution, pornography, et cetera. On corruption, there are those who feel that there should be no restriction on the vices of gambling, drugs, liquor, prostitution, and pornography. Many people claim that they should be allowed to indulge in them if they wish. Our private morals come from divine commands of right and wrong, which must be controlled by the individual and his conscience. The issue of public morality involving vices is another matter. In a Republican system, the majority of the people in a community have the right to protect the quality of life which they consider to be in the best public interest. This means that no individual has the right to sell, distribute, or promote any product or activities which are prohibited by the rule of the majority. Government has no business snooping into the private morality of the people, corrupted though it may be. But the moment there is a complaint that someone is promoting corruption or adversely affecting someone in the community, it is a matter of public morality. The community has the right to intervene. We, the people, are intervening on this public immorality issue of casino gaming. Whoever is promoting this vice is showing his or her great temptation as a certain type of adventurous enterpriser because corruption nearly always brings in enormous profits for that individual. However, in every age and every country, the enterprisers tend to form into a fraternity of sorts, which is often referred to as the establishment or the power people. These are relatively few wealthy families who have accumulated land, factories, transportation, communication, and banks, and eventually acquired tremendous amount of influence on every level of society. The founding fathers recognized in the fraternity of enterprisers two tendencies which needed to be guarded against when the Constitution was written. One of the tendencies of the enterprisers is to attempt the infiltration over every level of government and gradually use the powers of government to impose their will on the people and the economy to their own advantage. The founding fathers recognized these dangers and hoped to devise a constitutional structure, which would be the means of keeping these tendencies under control. They wanted the government to remain in the hands of the people. Portsmouth's local government is no longer in the hands of the people. The local government has the highest real estate tax rate in the area, then a sales tax increase to pay a toll to travel the roads, the PRJ has taken over the housing market, providing for 3,000 family places to live for below the federal poverty level. There are over 250 homeless people on the streets of Portsmouth. Unemployed rate is 37 percent. The number of people living under the umbrella of government is 68 percent. Portsmouth taxing and spending the taxpayers' money with right representation or obtaining our consent. By the way, what civic league urged what city council member to put this on the agenda? How did this get on the agenda? Who is the individual who wants to make a great profit for him or herself? I oppose this resolution. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. And the chair will ask Mr. Ross Cicerone, sir, if you'll come forward. And you have your chance to ask the audience to quietly show their support for your position,
Okay, everybody, listening to me? You want to destroy your churches and your children?
Sir, that's not what I said. Just ask the people who support your position to stand.
Well, I thought I'd give them a little instruction of what they're going to be voting against when they stand up.
No, sir.
Okay, everybody, stand up if you're against this casino where one person alone would be making a ton of money and destroying-
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
What's that?
I said, "Thank you very much."
Oh, okay. Well, thank you for bringing that out to the legal law.
The chair recognizes Councilwoman Lucas Burke.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for all of the speakers. Glad that you were able to express your opinion, and I believe that if there had been more citizens, this room would have been filled if there were persons in opposition. I do want to call to your reminder or memory that Senator Lucas in the Virginia General Assembly was one of the persons who tried to bring a one-set tax, gas tax, that would have eliminated tolls in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that, of course, was a referendum over 20 years ago that was voted down. So, that would have been one of the ways. Senator Lucas definitely doesn't stand to earn one dime on this project at all. There's developers who want to bring an option to our city. This resolution provides us an opportunity for it to go to the Commonwealth of Virginia for them to vote on. It doesn't mean our vote tonight will bring a casino. Still has to go to the General Assembly. There are other cities across the Commonwealth of Virginia that are looking to have this as an option for their city because it does bring jobs. The thinking of the crime and the prostitution and all of those things is so antiquated. I mean, it is so 1960. And if you have seen some of the presentations that we have seen and that business smart-minded people who are trying to bring economic development and jobs and opportunity and funding to their localities, if you've seen some of those presentations, then you would be a little bit more educated. So, thank you for me allowing me to express my opinion.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. The chair recognizes Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be voting against this because this is not good for Portsmouth. This is, if you look at the poverty rate enforcement, if you look at a lot of vices and a lot of things that the citizens are already dealing with, we do not need a casino or riverboat gambling. We've got the lottery, and a lot of them already can't pay bills and losing money, paycheck to paycheck, living paycheck to paycheck because they're buying lottery tickets. And I do, this is 2018, and crime is real when you bring that type of activity here. And there is no, the number-one reason that I'm against it is that there's no guarantee that any of those monies will come back to this area. The General Assembly will control all of that. There's no way that, and it depends on who's, who has the majority in the General Assembly as to whether or not, how that money would be dispersed. And then another good point that was raised, who's going to manage it? That's going to be critical. There will be a lot of competition to an RFP, RFPs, however it may happen, but there are going to be a lot of competition to bill here, and it's going to take some enticement to just to get anybody interested in coming to Portsmouth to do something like that. There is no place for it, if you look, without taking some valuable property, maybe downtown on the waterfront, because that's where most of them normally are located, on the waterfront. We don't need it, and I'm going to vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion on the motion? The motion is to adopt the resolution. Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Are the votes in? And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to 18-414, Reports on Boards and Commissions. And we'll have two reports, one on reappointments, which Councilman Moody will give, and one on appointments that Vice Mayor Simms will give. We'll go with reappointments first. Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. The following reappointments. Historic Preservation Commission, Sean Prince and G. Quint. Library Board, Brian Schaefer. Museum and Fine Arts Commission, Billy Cook. Diana Davenport. Gordon Jones. Donna Rogers. Robert Wilber. Planning Commission, Albert Williams.
That is the motion from Councilman Moody. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on these reappointments? Ready for the question? All in favor of the question, which is to reappoint, please vote yes. Oppose, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. It now carries. The next report is from Vice Mayor Simms, and these are new appointments.
Yes, sir. I recommend for appointment to the following boards and commissions. To the Community Criminal Justice Board, Mandy Owens, Chief Magistrate, Pamela Littlehill, Director of Social Services, Lancelot James, probation and parole officer, Amanda Wimbley, Community Corrections and Pretrial Services, and Catherine Grimm, Court Services Director. To the Economic Development Authority, Malcolm Mitchell. To the Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority, Kyle Kevajic. To the Towing Advisory Commission, Michael Fink, Danny Meeks, Bob Baldwin, the Planning Representative, Nathaniel Hawes, the Police Department Representative, and Kenneth Strickland, the Public Works Representative, and that's all.
That is your motion?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion, which is to appoint? Here and done. Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Oppose, no. And that motion carries. Which brings us to item 18-415, item submitted by council, and we have ordinance to consider. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of that ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance revising the monthly payment schedule for delivery of the city's local share allocation of the FY 2019 Portsmouth Public Schools operating budget.
Thank you. So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Oppose, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
We have, well, are there any other items submitted by council members? Vice Mayor Simms.
Yes, sir. I have a couple of upcoming items before we meet again. First of all, the rescheduled State of the Schools address given by Superintendent Bracy will be on Tuesday, October 30th, at 8:00 a.m. at the Edmund Center. That is a ticketed event. It is a benefit for the schools' foundation. You can call 393-5356 for tickets. We have on this Friday, October 26th, the Recovery Rock Celebration at Behavioral Healthcare Services. You can come join the group and paint a rock and tell your personal recovery story. That's from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at our Behavioral Healthcare Center at 1811 King Street. And then also, this Friday, the 26th, the Old Town Civic League is sponsoring their annual ghost walk, which departs from Trinity Church between 7:00 and 9:00 p.m. That is a ticketed event. It is a benefit for the Old Town Civic League. You can call 805-1526 for ticket information. And the city will be sponsoring our trunk-or-treat event on Friday and Saturday at the Union Bank and Trust Pavilion. On Friday, from 5:00 to 7:00, the haunted house area will be open. That's free and open to all children. And then on Saturday, the 27th, from 3:00 to 7:00, still in the pavilion, will be all the activities and the treats and the haunted house. There'll be live music and games and costume contests and entertainment and a magic show and a bounce house and all sorts of good stuff and do your sunshine dance. And that's it.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Lucas Burke.
Thank you, Mayor. I have some additional events that will be hosted in the city that I would like to bring to your attention. The 83rd Annual Convention of the Virginia State Conference of the NAACP will be taking place this Friday through Sunday, October 26th through the 28th at the Renaissance. And this will be the first time that the Portsmouth chapter has hosted the state convention right here in the city of Portsmouth. The keynote speaker for the Freedom Fund Bank, which that will be held on Saturday night, will be Dr. Danny Glover. And the theme for this year's conference is All or Nothing. And if you would like to attend, there's still time. You can find tickets at www-enough18.com. I would like to also invite you out to Spirit Night for the American Cancer Society that's going to be hosted on Monday night, October 29th, by my chapter, Portsmouth Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. We're going to have fun, food, and entertainment. The IC Norcom Cheerleaders will be present. There'll be face painting, raffles, dancing, a DJ, karaoke, and also a chance for you to win a 2018 Nissan Rogue. So, come on out on next Monday, the 29th. And also, our Veterans Day for honoring our heroes will be on Sunday, November 11th, right here in Portsmouth at the High Street Landing Flagpole. We'll all be there. We hope to see you there as well. Music will be provided by the Tide Water Concert Band, and the speaker will be Real Admiral- Mark Hugel, United States Navy.
Thank you, ma'am. And that, uh, that, that thing in Norcom is a fundraiser, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
For cancer.
For cancer, breast cancer, which is why we're wearing our pink tonight.
Thank you. Uh, the Chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. I s- I see Mr. Steve Whitehead in the audience, and it reminds me of an event, uh, that took place. Matter of fact, it's the first, hopefully the first annual, and that was the cruise-in to Old Town. Uh, Steve, uh, Whitehead came up with the idea, uh, approached myself and the mayor, and, uh, uh, thanks to the city manager, uh, made it happen. It was, uh, the weather was great. There were a lot of, a lot of cars I would like to, uh, have. I, I wish I could have bought them for the price that they were back in the sixties and fifties and, uh, cashed them in at today's market, but, uh, it grew a good number of people, and, uh, Mr. Whitehead's to be commended for, uh, for his idea. Hopefully, we can make this, uh, annual event, and we need more events, obviously, downtown, but, uh, Steve stepped forward and made it happen.
Thank you, sir. Next item is, uh, eighteen four sixteen, Report on Pending Items. Dr. Patton?
Yes, Mayor. I have already reported to you and members of council of those items will be coming back.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, our next item is eighteen four seventeen, Non-Agenda Speakers. And our first speaker is Steve Whitehead, and sir, you have five minutes.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager, Council, and other attending city officials. My name is Steve Whitehead, and I reside at forty-four nineteen County Street in the city. I've lived here all my life except for my time in the Marine Corps. Tonight, I'm before you to thank you for listening to me about the vision I had to help bring some foot traffic to the downtown area, especially High Street, and to help our restaurants in their struggle to make up for some of the lost patrons that the amphitheater closing caused. I spoke with Mayor Rowe and Bill Moody at Bill's campaign kickoff. And I talked to him about a cruise-in on High Street. Many of you know that I'm a old car enthusiast, and I have been since I was a teenager. Building my first car when I was just sixteen. I paid ten dollars for that car and eventually got it to where it was drivable on the street and state inspected. But that didn't quit. I continue to own several today, including the nineteen thirty-seven Ford that I've had since nineteen seventy-eight. A nineteen sixty-two Mercury, that was my grandfather's that he bought at McCready Motors for thirty-two-hundred-and-eighty dollars. A nineteen eighty-five Cougar XR seven that I bought at John Cool, and a nineteen eighty-eight Cavalier convertible Z twenty-four that I bought at Bill Lewis Chevrolet. And the one I drive the most to the cruise-ins and the car shows is a nineteen sixty-six Impala three ninety-six four-speed that's commonly referred to as a muscle car in the car world, the old car world. And I bought that car because that was the car that I owned when I got back from Vietnam, that I bought from Smith Corner Motors, a used car dealership here in the city of Portsmouth. After the brief conversation with, uh, the mayor and Bill, I scheduled a meeting with the mayor to go over the details, and Mr. Moody also attended. They liked it, so it was off to the races. It was held on October the thirteenth from two to six PM on two blocks of High Street. The problem was I was competing with two other car shows that had been previously scheduled, and many had already committed to those and paid their money, so they couldn't come. This event would not be a show where paid attendees have their cars judged and trophies are awarded. This was simply, as the title says, a cruise-in. We drive our cars to a location. We get together and we talk about our cars and what's happening in the old car world. Some of the what happened in the fifties and sixties at area drive-in restaurants like Rodman's, the Dixie, and the Circle, just to mention a few. People outside of Hobby often stop to see the old cars and reminisce about maybe it was the car they had when they first bought a car or a car that one of their relatives may have owned. That's just what happened on that Saturday on High Street. We had old cars, old guys, and even some old music from the fifties and sixties played by a DJ. Maybe one day, we'll have a live band. After High Street was closed, I started parking the cars with a total of thirty-seven various makes, models, and years participating. I've passed out some of the pictures that day so that those of you that weren't there could see what took place. All of that aside, I'm really here tonight to thank the city for allowing my vision to take place. I want to thank everyone, including Stacy Porter in the Planning Department. She really helped me. LaVores Pace, Deputy City Manager, he really helped me. He really put up with me, is what it was. Um, and all the help they gave me, and they made this idea become a reality. I want to especially thank Lieutenant Wright of the Portsmouth Fleet Department and the officers that were on hand during our event for how they managed the people that attended with the cars and the visitors who came to see us. All of you to be commended for what you did and how I and my friends were treated. My hope is that the restaurants in the immediate area benefited from our presence. I had spoken with each establishment prior to the final commitment, and all seemed to love the idea that we would be there. They had the flyers in their windows. Yes, even Fred Schoenfield was on board. I even used his, his historic landmark theater, the Commodore Theater, as the background for the cruise-in dash plaque. You have one before you, and you can keep it.
Sir, your time is up. Thanks.
Can I continue?
No, sir. Your time is up. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Can, can I ask you to come forward? I need to give something to you.
Uh, can we do it quickly?
Can I come to you and give it to you?
You may.
What I have is a poster of our, uh, our flyer. My hope is that you can put this somewhere where the city can see this, and, uh, it will, it will renew the interest that we created that day, and hopefully next April and next October, we can do this again, and we can do it every year, even after I'm not here.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sergio O'Neil, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council and the public. My name is Sergio O'Neil, and I reside at fifteen sixty Darren Circle here in, in the city of Portsmouth. First of all, I would like to thank somebody who may not get thanked a lot, but he definitely does a great job. Mr. Ashby, thank you so much for your phone call today. I was definitely surprised, and I was actually at work when you called me, but I was ecstatic that you called me back and gave me, and gave me the information that I needed. Um, I think that is very thoughtful of you to be able to reach out to the city, to the citizens, and provide the feedback that we need from a legal standpoint. So, I thank you for what you did today. Um, so, since that resolved my issue, I'd like to move on to something very near and dear to me, which is public education here in the city of Portsmouth. Um, the conversation about the casino really caught my attention, and I was thinking, I said, well, you know, I hear that a lot of people are against it, and I get it. You know, I get all the issues that come with it. However, we do need something that contributes to education here in the city of Portsmouth. We need to find an avenue to make sure public education is fully funded here in the city of Portsmouth. Now, whether some people agree that we are currently funded at a good, at a level that we should be, that's up in the air. I mean, I can tell you from working in education, you know, I work in the private sector of education, funding can, can make or break education. It really does. I mean, and, you know, we can say, yeah, we're doing well by what we're giving them, but costs steadily go up in the educational world. Uh, I was just explaining to, um, to our good friend right here, Cat, I love him to death, how some of the things that, you know, we're, that Virginia Beach is doing in their public school system with security, but, but then that's because they have the funding for it. They have the funding to do what they're doing out there. And I think that, you know, when we start talking about, uh, br- economic development, whatever the case might be, we need to make sure that we have something that attracts, that brings people in, and the, and the first thing you hear is, what does the school system look like? Can we bring our kids to Portsmouth for them to have a good education? Because education today is now more important than ever before. People are looking at what the school system, that's one of the first things they look at. And without a good education system, we don't attract those businesses and residents that we need to move our city forward, that could, to be on pace with other cities. I mean, you can look around at those other cities in our, in Hampton Roads. Look at Hampton, which is mostly, which is the closest in demographic to Portsmouth, and see how far they've come in the last five years, and what they've done to bring people to that city, to move that city forward, and that, that make people want to come to Hampton. Portsmouth can do it the same way, if not better. We may not have what Virginia Beach has, but we have something unique to Portsmouth. We have that family feel, and that's something that we need to promote. Part of that family feel is education. We need to make sure we're doing enough. One thing I can, I would recommend for you all to put in your next legislative package, is to make sure that something is in there that, that raises the contribution from the lottery system that goes, that's supposed to go to education. A lot, I mean, North Carolina has a, a dynamic program, how their lottery works. A hundred, all, a hundred percent of their lottery goes to education. That's why they're able to do what they do in their, in their state with education. We, Portsmouth needs to recommend to the General Assembly that the lot, that the lottery contribution goes up to these localities, 'cause that's what it was supposed to be for in the first place. However, we've seen that with the lottery funds that come into the school systems, the other levels of contribution goes down, and that's not fair. They are getting the same amount of money. You just changed the line item where it comes from, and that's shortchanging our students. We don't want our students to be at the bottom tier when it comes to, comes to the accessibility of, the, the access to, to the resources they need to be successful. We want them to be the top of the line, the top performer. And we have some dynamic schools here in the city of Portsmouth. I can say that my education stopped right here in the city of Portsmouth at church and high school. And all, all of what I learned throughout the public school system is where, is how I got to where I am, but I want to see the city do more for our school system. And I get it, people have personal differences, and they have personal whatevers, but we have to put that to the side and say, let's look at our students first. Let's look at to make sure that they are successful. Bringing, having, having the resources they need, that's the start of it. And let's start to work together with our school system to make sure we're doing it the right way. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alan Sharp, and sir, you have five minutes.
City Mayor and the Board, all American citizens. Alan Sharp, retired from the Army, airborne, and a Ranger, twenty-some years. Uh, I attended Virginia Union for theology. I have a license for six jobs, and I like to pass some of the, my opinion and some of my suggestions to young people. And that is, I was born in Norfolk. I went to Nor- Portsmouth, my family moved to Portsmouth, and I went to IC Norcom, played football, sports. Norcom had me in the gym and the Hall of Fame. I had no endeavor in my life where I was a failure. And I preach to people, you need that thing to say, if number one can do it, I can do it. And I'm at the point now that, uh, I wanna reach back and let's say, uh, pull somebody else up. I'm on the verge right now. I made a commitment to Virginia Union that I'm gonna have a scholarship. I'm not talking about a hundred, I'm talking about thousands of dollars. I'm gonna donate it for a scholarship to Virginia Union in Richmond. And, uh, the whole city, thank you, Mayor, for this time. I appreciate it. For the whole city, uh, veterans are not treated as veterans. They're being mistreated every day. I'm talking about the bank, I'm talking about all the commercial places. We're not getting treated right. I wanna see every soldier or alderman or sailor, when he come back to the, uh, to the state, I want him to register with the city mayor, to volunteer for, volunteer for to do work in the community. If we have sandbags, we gonna throw sandbags. I want the mayor, I plan to ask him if he'll have a pen for everybody that's doing their, what you call American citizens, uh, doing their privileges and their responsibility. We're not liv- living up to our responsibility. We talking about money, money, but we not talking about education. We need to go back to the Constitution where it says, uh, all American citizens, privileges and responsibilities. And it says about doing volunteer work, and most of us don't have time to volunteer to do nothing. We are busy. We're busy with our job. We're busy with our family, but we not reaching out. The church said, feed my sheep. That don't mean just food. That means education also. We're not doing that. Pull somebody up. If you finish school, pull college, make arrangement financially to pull somebody else up. Going by the Constitution, that's what we need to do. Get back to the Constitution. We are procrastinating, most of us. We need to get busy and be concerned with our neighbor. Love thy neighbor as thyself. How can you love God who you have not seen and hate man who you have seen? I want everybody to be, and I want this whole city to know that the city people are operating on a state level. The military is operating on a higher level, better known as federal. You cannot close the door on a, a veteran. The business people don't know this. We need to get busy as citizens, do some volunteer work. I stay in a senior home, Victory Square. We cannot get a, a minister, uh, Deegan, uh, missionary to come in that building. We got over a hundred people, and down the street, one block, is feed us. The milit- the churches, yeah, they feed, they throw food at us on certain days. They are procrastinating. Thanks for the time, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. And this concludes our meeting, and this meeting is now adjourned.